So I am acknowledging that we do not have a quorum tonight. Bill Lisk and myself, Michelle Montague are here. We're expecting Mr. Petroselli and don't know about anyone else. Therefore, we're going to have an informal discussion because there are no official items on the agenda tonight. We will be discussing the section of the master plan that we were asked to review.
Okay. Hey, it's gonna be interesting just talking to you two.
In our comfy chairs.
In your comfy chairs. You could just spin away from me if I say something that's, that you don't feel like listening to.
Done. That's a good meeting.
So we're kind of cruising through our master plan review. Bill's already read the whole thing.
Well, he comes from an overachieving family.
It's true.
Got it. Well, whoever's listening to this later, thank you for taking the time to read it and send your comments. I did identify a section of the appendix that I'll assign at the end along with the originally assigned May meeting section, which is the action plan. We're not gonna have very much good discussion tonight, or maybe you guys can.
Maybe we'll have plenty. Okay, discussion. All right, let's do it.
So part two was community vision and values. This section introduces this community vision, which seems to capture the community pretty well. The vision is aspirational. So if there's something else that the commission thinks should be captured or maybe framed differently, it's a good time to kind of talk about it preliminarily. And I did receive a comment that resilience should be added to the vision, and I can agree with that. Also, just to note this again, we're gonna be doing updates in 2026. So we can talk about modifying this and have it for our notes, but it's not actually going to be modified in the super near term.
Right.
Does anybody have any thoughts or questions about?
Yeah, I suppose it's something to strive for. It's a little dreamy.
Aspirational? Yes.
Yeah.
That's how most of them read, but do you think it's a little?
No, I think all the things are reasonable. I don't know that we can, what, at what point we could achieve them all, but if it should be aspirational, it is. That's great.
All right.
I don't disagree with anything that it says. I just don't know how we might accomplish some of it.
Sure.
We'll get to that.
Sure. But you think it captures the community?
Yeah, I do.
Cool. So I wanna just go back in time a little bit here and I did go over some of the 1991 comprehensive plan, or if it was called the master plan, I'm not sure at the time. So some of the community values and the 1991 goals are very similar, as you can see. And then, can you all read that?
Yeah.
Okay. And as a part of the planner's assessment, I also looked at the 2000 comprehensive plan and the 2011 land use plan that discuss, just the parts that discuss vision, values, goals, and policies. So the parts that kind of match up with the section. The 2000 plan, I paraphrase all of these that are in gray here. But some things to note in here is that a lot of these have been accomplished, which is great. There was also a set target for growth. And the plan actually identified that residential growth of more than 5% per year was too much. And I'm just kind of wondering if there's anything worth talking through on this slide?
Do you know what percentage of growth we are at at the moment?
We could come up with that calculation pretty easily just based on like residential building permits, but
It doesn't say.
If you look at like population growth, I think it was at like 4.4 or something when economies of places did that land use inventory. They were looking at the kind of growth projections and going off that. And I think in the counter, it was less, like 2.2.
How did they intend to limit growth to 5% or less per year? That's what I mean about kind of dreaming, like you're gonna be like, oh, we've reached our maximum applications for the year. No more applications, like.
Well, that's one way.
If there's not, yeah, if there's not the structure to accommodate the residential growth, maybe that's where it was coming from. It's kind of, these are the questions that I have too. Like, I was hoping someone might know.
Like, how, yeah, how did they intend to limit it? I mean, it seems like they got lucky.
Yeah, I think.
That's prettier, though.
Bill was here.
I was here. And I'm just, yeah, I could have been my first year on.
It was some time ago.
Yeah, it was. But I think the 5% of let me think how they, or we achieved that. You know, we're just came to that conclusion. We, I wish I could, I wish I could help you on that, but that really was.
I mean, you could, it could have been a data review. Somebody was looking at census data, population growth, and just thinking that that was a reasonable number. That's been the town's been able to accommodate in the past or something.
Yeah.
But anyway, we'll get more into growth in general as we move through this. And then from 2011, the land use plan update included these community values, and then this community vision is very similar to what we have now. I didn't feel like reading. And I'm not sure if I put this in your materials or not. I think I did.
You mean this one?
Yeah, I might have like put, because when I did the planner's assessment, I think I put these.
I don't, I don't remember seeing this in.
Okay. Yeah, I might have just made it into presentation then.
Well, it's good.
Pedestrian friendly environment?
A pedestrian friendly environment.
Like basically to the bridge?
Well, these.
Or to that way, if you survive to the bridge and then the highway.
Values to strive for.
Really not much past the bridge. It's not that friendly.
Sure.
It's true.
Yeah, values to strive for, values that everybody could kind of could agree on at the time were important to them. Doesn't mean that it was achieved necessarily.
Yeah, I guess I shouldn't. I keep focusing on the gap between aspirational and in reality and how you would put that, I mean, just to say, oh, we want this and we want that. It's like, well, what's, what's the plan to make that happen?
Yeah, and a lot of this stuff gets touched upon, so.
Yeah, well, you know, and to your point, I think a lot of the making it pedestrian friendly, it's gonna be either an underpass or an over, or pedestrian overbridge, which is not as good as an underpass because bikes.
Wildlife?
Well, yeah, we can, we can't even go there as far as wildlife because it's, yeah. Something I would like to know from CETA is why the, the eight-foot-high wildlife sensing stops by almost four miles from, no, three miles from.
My best guess would be like, that's as far as it got extended because that's probably what the project could afford. Did you see those entrances? They go to every single residents?
Yeah.
With the concrete and the cattle guard? I was like, whoa, that, that costs a money. My guess would be that's how much money and maybe the next phase is planned for whenever. There's more money, right?
Yeah, the interesting thing is that even before the wildlife sensing went up, there are more deer fatalities just from right outside of town than anywhere else on Route 50, so.
I think you can find CETA plans. They're like public documents, so
Yeah.
Would be interesting to look into. Is there anything on this that you want me to stick around on this page for, or should I move on to the 2019 community values and really dive in?
Yeah.
Okay, so I did, I just kind of set this up so that there's a couple of bullet points under each. And then on a later slide, when we get into the goals and policy section, then I dedicate a whole slide page to each of the values. But I just kind of wanted to talk through these really quickly. So number one is healthy natural environment. So the section considers scenic values and ecological functions. And so what needs to be kind of clarified and defined a little bit more and maybe is in the action plan portion? It's just the government role and responsibility there. And Ridgeway does seem to make it pretty clear that we want to take like a leadership role in some areas. The Green Street Sustainability Park, the Microgrid on Space to Create, some of the dark sky lighting policies, stormwater standards, or waterwise demonstration right here in the park. All sorts of things like that.
Wildlife corridor.
Sure.
Healthy natural environment, and you started the Green Street Solar Park?
The sustainability park, yeah.
I don't know that I would put that in that category.
Well.
Just saying.
Doesn't bother me.
Just some town actions that demonstrate that we're interested in sustainability in general.
Yeah.
And then a water element. It talks about water a ton in this section. But there could be some benefit to kind of breaking it out into its own section, especially because state statute does require that we have a water element. They have specific things that we need to do for the water element, certain things that need to be included. There probably is a way to just keep it in this section.
I think it, I think it deserves its own section or suggestion, because a year like this is a really good example of what, you know, and a year like this following, you know, the Beaver, the Beaver Creek blowout and can easily cascade downwards rapidly.
Yeah, it says this section considers scenic values and ecological functions. I don't think that the solar park belongs in there.
I'm not suggesting we add it in there, but I'm just pointing out that Tom's already taken on a leadership role in showing, in showcasing various sustainability projects.
Yeah, okay.
Sense of community inclusivity. So again, this talks a lot about housing in this section. We obviously need to update that, and we need to use the materials that we come up with during the Housing Needs Assessment and Housing Action Plan. But also, I received some comments just about the need to kind of celebrate what Ridgeway has already done, what we've already accomplished relating to housing, and then another part of this is civic health and kind of understanding if people want to get involved in local government, how can we help if yes?
Do you know how many applicants we've had for the open planning position?
The planning commission position? No, but I think it might be none.
Well, and I was gonna add, I just ran for council and there was no election because I was the only person that ran for one open seat. So I don't know how much people want to get involved in local government. I'm not saying that that's the fault of Ridgeway government, and I don't know what the answer is, but I don't, I don't know that I'd give a high score on that based on those two things.
Well, one of the things that I think removes community engagement was exactly where I saw you last, where I saw both of you.
At the community conversation that Angie organized?
Yeah, yeah, no, and that's, I mean, to the point, it's, I, more things like that are the only likely source of generating that, so.
More people interested in getting involved, yeah.
And I wonder if the Dark Sky Initiative would fit under number one. I think that it fits better than the one I've been arguing. But I also feel like we could take the Dark Sky.
That was in there too.
The Dark Sky further, and I've mentioned this before, but create some type of an incentive or for existing homes, so that's not just new construction. You know, like maybe make available a basic Dark Sky compliant outdoor light at costs that people could purchase from the town, if the town could buy them in bulk, because I know that my neighborhood, the lights light up my house, people's outdoor lights when they're on at night, literally light up inside of my house.
You know, there, there might be some state or, God knows, there's not gonna be any federal one. But it might be a statement toward, you know, retrofitting.
Right?
People's.
Yeah, I think that would be a great thing for us to look into, if that's something that, look into if we can offer that in some way. Because I think that people would take advantage of it. And I think there's quite a few, I mean, lights used to be made outside to light up the whole block, right? And, and now we're getting away from that.
Street crime is way down, in a good way. Happy.
All right. Good thoughts. So number three, small town character and identity. I got a comment about the definition of livability, so kind of opening it up for discussion. What do, what do we think that that means?
Sorry, you're late.
Yeah.
What was the comment? Was it a question? What is livability, or did it suggest?
It was, I'm at.
Mine? What did I say? Hi.
That's okay, we're having an informal meeting.
At least you're here. I'm barely here. I'm almost here.
We're out one of the chairs at the end. We're gonna have new chairs.
Grab that one wheel up here.
Yeah. What was my comment? That's really fun.
I don't exactly remember what.
Oh, I see.
It was something about livable neighborhoods or something. What is that?
What is a livable neighborhood?
Are you older now?
Yeah, yeah.
What do we think Ridgeway thinks it means?
What do we think a livability means? I mean, to me, I guess it would be the fact that I can walk those places. The only negative I would have on the livability of Ridgeway is our exorbitant prices at the grocery store. You know, I would, I'm willing to pay more for the convenience and not having to go to Montrose, but not that much more. So other than that, I literally walk, can walk every, I mean, not everyone, but I can walk everywhere in town. Like, I rarely drive. Which is, that's very livable.
Yeah. Okay. And then, trying to that, what's kind of culturally important to Ridgeway? And how do we support and enhance these things? And then I gave some suggestions that weren't already like highlighted in the plan. So one is entrepreneurial opportunities, so like incubating businesses and helping people who, you know, grew up here find something to do here. Historic preservation opportunities, and then connectivity opportunities.
I think we do well with the connectivity, at least with the, the events that we have. You know, this, the summer concert series in July is highly, lots of people attend.
Being like talking about roads and streets and walkability and pedestrian connectivity as well.
That sort of physical.
Yeah, it could be, I mean, you could interpret it both ways, but. So it's doing, we're doing good on the social connections, but physically making it safe for pedestrians could be enhanced.
Aspiration.
I mean, it's not terrible, but there's work that could be done.
We, I mean, in that deal with the stuff on the other side of the highway, we always have that problem. We had it for 35 years, you know, this crossing the state highway is always gonna be a challenge for us. But if, if you were to not think about that or take it out of the picture, I think everything else works pretty well.
Yep.
I mean, that's, that's almost, that's a difficult problem to solve, but if you kind of put it aside, the rest of it works pretty good for me, you know, and she does it more than I do. If it works for her, I trust her.
Well, and I would say with, you know, starting the highway being an issue, it's not just the highway. It's like leading up to it, right? Like walking past the gas station is treacherous because traffic's coming from all over the place, and then what's on the other side? You've got the fairgrounds.
I mean, just the connectability of getting that to us is been tough for a long time. I mean, I don't, there's been talk of a tunnel here several different times in the tunnel, and there's water table issues, and then the tunnel gets dark and all the tunnel issues and how to get tunnel permission from CETA, you know, so it's, it's hard to incorporate. It's a huge deal.
Maybe we should just unannex that half of the.
I didn't say that.
And then it's not an issue.
I didn't even think.
I was being sarcastic.
So are we?
You mean Six Flags in Ridgeway?
Yeah.
Oh, goodness.
Well, that is not the case, so we gotta figure out how to accommodate.
You talked about, of course, we talked about a bridge over to there. I just.
What if there was like a historic like trolley car that just drove back and forth? And you could like hop on the trolley car right at the visitor's center, and it would drive across through the intersection and drop you at the Conoco? And then, with the light, and then you could hop on at the Conoco and it would drive you over here.
In Detroit, and it was a terrible idea. It was a trolley cart called the Q line that takes up plenty of traffic in a congested area, and they're hoping that pedestrians will just hop on and off to just check out things in that particular area, but most people want to go all the way downtown. It doesn't go that far. Or it, it's literally getting in the way of cars driving and people biking, and it's, it's.
So you just shot my idea down. We're not doing that, is what I heard.
I mean, you know, like.
The trolley.
Elevate it or some things.
Yeah.
Build a gondola across.
Gondolas, no.
Oh.
I like that better than Rachel Tunnel.
All right, you're the bankroll for that. Let's do it.
Okay, I'll just write a check.
Yeah.
And there's a bike, there's the bike rack on it, like up in Tyra?
Yeah.
It's not very, it doesn't have to be very long.
Yeah, but what is the, yeah, I mean, I, I like, I've not heard that in 30 years. That's the best idea ever, yeah.
Nice work, Angie. Thanks.
Damn.
Ask, ask Preston if he can put that in next year's budget.
Next month's budget.
He's on the call. I think, unless he left us, but, all right, well, do you want to move on to vibrant and balanced economy?
I know, we've been having a lot of fun with this one.
It's a good one, and we're gonna dive into it even deeper when we get into the goals and policies. So this is just a some initial plots.
This is still 2019.
So the balanced economy, I got a lot of comments on economic challenges, and I had a couple of conversations at the Open House event, the community conversation event about it as well. So it's just becoming more and more of a prominent challenge. And I've also been connecting a little bit with Fuse and just chatting with them about they have a series of meetings, the Business Revitalization Committee is what they were calling it, where they had a bunch of businesses meet. I don't even know how often, but I think those meetings are kind of over, but they could, you know, revitalize at any point and meet again.
What came of those meetings?
Just feedback. I don't know, I don't know exactly, because I wasn't there, but.
I mean, isn't this the responsibility of the Chamber of Commerce or?
Well, I think they talked about that quite a lot at those meetings, and I think there was a representative present that goes to. So hopefully they did get together to figure out some solutions, but I think it's a it's a pretty broad thing, like there's obviously like place making issues at hand when it comes to walking down Flint Street and you see vacant commercial buildings that were sat there for a long time. That's definitely takes away from the vibrancy.
Well, and some of that was the jump in property tax, and commercial property tax jumped even more.
I said this at the last meeting, but I think it's worth repeating. In the 32 or 33 years that I've lived here, I've seen some prominent employers be lost to Montrose and through, because of their economic development incentives. We lost a TP business, which was started in Ridgeway, I believe, and had, I think, 12 jobs. And they were good jobs. And the other one was Trusco, which was started in Ridgeway, both Trusco graduated Ridgeway High School. Trusco had probably 10 or 12 jobs, and I wanna, I don't want to use the word stolen, but they were enticed or seduced away by Montrose's economic development, and I, the last thing I said, we should look at doing that ourselves and see what we can come up with, with some great one. Because in my professional opinion, Ridgeway has the most vacant commercial space that it has ever had today in 30 years. I don't have a reason why. I don't know, but I believe that that's a fact.
Well, yeah, I think lack of affordable housing is, is a major one.
I think it's, I think it's Amazon, American Water versus Amazon, I think has a lot of, a lot to do with it. But also the higher taxes, housing, it's all that stuff that we talk about all the time.
Trusco, you know, they're just across in Montrose County. And yeah, I'm sure he's got people, you know, that, that can afford to live in Montrose that couldn't afford to live.
Another one we lost was the candle shop. Forgot about that.
The what?
The candle factory that was in Trusco, and I'm not.
I believe they were looking for a bigger space. And a larger population base.
Well, I'm not, I'm not throwing stones. It's just, it's just observing what's happened.
Yeah.
I'm not sure we, we could have done anything in any of those cases, but I really think we should see about some type of economic incentive to get people to do housing, get people to create jobs, to get, just do whatever we can.
Yeah, so that would be a great, you know, goal or policy or action item to add into the plan. So we're just talking pretty generally about what the possibilities are, but it's good to take note of all of those sort of detailed things. And I don't know what that would look like. I can't really make any suggestions on that right now, but they're all good, these are all good ideas. This is fine.
I think Bill.
So hopefully we talk.
Bill got me thinking. I mean, if somebody maybe an economic development incentive would be somebody creating new jobs, somehow we could help them afford a house, like help them save on a billing permit to be on your third job you created or something like that. Maybe we could do a non-monetary incentive that way. I mean, housing is so important for employees and also to businesses.
To employers, yeah.
Wonder if we could incentivize it without having to write a check.
Under vibrant and balanced economy, I did note that a recreation and tourism element is another thing that state statute is asking for us to develop or have in our master plan. We definitely touch on it like throughout the plan, but I was kind of curious if you thought it needed its own plan section, if it fits under this or if it fits somewhere else.
Seems like if the state's asking for one, we should do that and water. It's not that hard to separate it out. You know, we're gonna go back and say, no, we're not gonna do that.
Yeah, if we're doing an update, we're gonna do the state required.
So yes, it should be a separate section.
Uh, but they don't actually specify that it needs to be its own section. They just have some, yeah. There's some stuff that we could add to it to make it robust enough to be its own section, definitely. I think when I've been talking about this, like economic development ties really closely with tourism and so the and I'll get into this in a later slide, but the town actually kind of defining what they want to pursue and like how they want to, I don't know, entice people to come by or um, we just kind of need more like parameters around that because it's some people like it, some people don't like it, some people think it's gonna be too much too soon and I don't know. Heard a lot of different things.
What people? Nobody here, nobody here.
No, I think you, uh, the rad trails, you know, uh, or.
It's an unofficial meeting though.
Yeah, but thinking about how those industries and those attractions can actually generate incomes in like those local businesses. Is the disconnect that's kind of happening. So making a plan that would encompass all of that is really talking about it.
Yeah, absolutely. Makes sense.
There's only three of us here because there's only three champs.
I guess the others knew that.
Um, all right. Well, okay, well managed growth. Let's move on to that uh value.
Not more than five percent.
So we have and we have had for a long time, this like upward from the core um growth model. And we have these boundaries that are defined and mapped and all of that. Um, we can talk about when we get to like the growth framework section, that a little bit more. Uh, but does anybody have any initial thoughts like just at the value stage?
I think from this growing from the center out is a fabulous idea.
Doesn't it just make sense?
Yeah, it's it's difficult for us because we don't have much, but.
How are you gonna regulate that?
We have like boundaries.
I know that, but but if something comes in that's viable, you're gonna be like, oh, you know, maybe in, maybe in a few years. When maybe in twenty years, like if it's viable, I think it would be hard to deny it, even if it's not in place.
If it's viable outside of the town limits, where they have to extend their own util- utility connections and things.
Not necessarily. What if right, what if it's on the outside edge i- inside our growth boundary, right? Yeah, it's still not gonna be core out.
Sure.
I'm saying, one, once again, this is aspirational.
Yeah.
I thi- I think it has more to do with education.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I think, well, um, so I don't know that it has to do with day-to-day growth. I mean, I I have every vacant tract that's buildable in town memorized. So everything is touching sewer, water and sewer except for stuff that's out. And 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 most of the stuff that's out is not really in the urban building, except for Wolf. And Wolf is the only piece that that's um, and Wolf, Wolf is the most logical to be developed next.
So the north side of the Charles Street.
Yeah, and um, it it that puts a hitch in the giddy up. I mean, it's the best place to be, fits the best and we can't, we're not seeing it. So that maybe we end up with like a hop, skip and a jump, uh, problem that we, and we don't want to skip.
And our Frederick and Otto slated to then run through there up to County number five.
It was all planted. Well, yeah, uh, in eighteen ninety-three, uh, so you can, you can.
Who owned it before Wolf?
Uh, we call, it's called the Esther Lewis plant. It was Esther Lewis properties, we're just lying for it. But there's, I think, three blocks deep all the way from Charles to Otto.
All the way from Mary, Mary to County to Amelia.
Yeah, I went to also east. It fills in a, there's probably a hundred lots there.
Yeah, uh, it was Marie Scott who owned, uh, who owned it before the Wolves.
And she sold it to Wolf?
She did a land trade uh for.
Amelia Street.
Property up in, uh, like a lake or something. That is far as I remember.
Cause the, up on Amelia is the Marie Scott development.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that was just a bunch of developers. She has her name.
She didn't own that property? Oh.
She and Wayland Phillips, two women, uh, owned Macho, Macho in Ray County.
A woman and her name was Wayland?
I think, I think, uh, Marie Scott was was uh, kidnapped. I I think Esther Lewis was kidnapped. And I think if I want Marie Scott, Esther Lewis, Esther Lewis Wolf, doesn't look like that.
And so it's a land trade that got Wolf that property? Right.
Essentially, it was the same.
This section also just, I know you guys are thinking about infrastructure while we're talking about this. Um, but obviously like building resilience into our systems through redundancy and proactive planning is something I'm gonna do comments on, um, just to make sure that we're prepared to to handle anything that comes our way or interrupts our basic services. Well, I guess while I'm on this side, I'll just mention the area of influence is the three mile plan area. It's where we can kind of comment on things that happen outside of our borders that would maybe affect town. Um, the county has to send all of those applications to us to review. But technically it's like what the state calls it is a three mile plan. And we, you know, in the, in the master plan, it says that we're meeting the state statute requirements to have that three mile plan in order to pursue annexations or have annexations happen. Um, but it's not super clear, so like clarifying that would be really helpful for anyone that's just freezing.
We used to call it extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Extraterritorial jurisdiction, that's.
They call it Texans.
Nice. Doesn't three mile plan just have a better ring to it?
I don't know.
No, because they think a three mile island was just a nuclear dump site above.
Okay, so area of influence is okay?
Yeah.
Extraterritorial, because it's sort of like extraterrestrial, but different.
Yeah. All right, um, getting into goals and policies now, we're moving on and kind of digging a little bit deeper. So community value number one, healthy natural environment. This is some of the stuff that maybe needs to be expanded. Um, and something I noted here is just that community education is very key in this realm. Like in order to actually make things happen in this area of the plan. Um, we need like a lot of partners and a lot of people understanding what the issues are. So water element again is is listed here. I have a state statute that requires this. Um, I'm not gonna get into that too much. I also put recreation and tourism element here because there are aspects, oops. Of the healthy natural environment that tied into that, of course. Um, and then resilience is something that came up quite a lot in comments. Um, climate hazard mitigation and avoidance. We do have a lot more like other materials that can inform a plan update. So we have the twenty twenty-one San Miguel and Uriah County Climate Action Plan. Um, we have the U-Rod, all the planning that went around that. Um, there's also twenty twenty-five Community Wildfire Protection Plan that the county put together. And then uh twenty twenty-four Multi Jurisdictional Emergency Operations Plan. Um, also in here, I just added our resilience hub at Space to Create. So in the decor room, they did the microgrid and that will obviously uh bring down some energy costs, but also creates like a little bit of a hub in case there was a community disaster of some sort where people lost power. They can go there, charge their cell phones, have access to internet, um, be in the air conditioning. I don't really know, be in the heat. I don't know what would happen that would cause something like that, but it's a good idea to have like a spot where everybody knows to go in case of memory. Okay. Um, and then obviously there's like some more work on renewable energy happening with like S N P A and um, there's energy code updates that could happen. There's uh electric vehicle stuff and more circular economy things that are more prevalent over here.
Can we talk about energy code for a second? How does that, I I mean, we make, and I'm asking questions here. I don't understand. We made policies here about the energy code and a lot of times when they, when the rubber hits the road in the, in the building trade, becoming practical and difficult to deal with. And I think we, for me, there should be some type of, we don't get enough feedback. The builders, uh, in my opinion, we should, I I feel like there should be some sort of, uh, or vehicle.
Community conversation.
An energy code workshop that's happening on May fifteenth.
For instance.
In this room here with lunch caterer, which Eco Action Partners is putting it on. I'll send you the flyer.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll shut up. I mean, I hear the builders complain about it all the time, of course.
Yeah, but they don't show up and they either, so I'm not sure how we're gonna get their input. An informal survey?
I don't know. I uh, I can try to give an info. There's only half a dozen builders.
We had a couple at the community conversation.
Free beer, I reckon.
Who's catering live? Is this your dad?
I don't know.
No, no question.
I'm not organizing this.
Who's invited?
It's Eco Action Partners. We sent it to, we sent it to the area contractors already.
Is, are we supposed to be there?
Um, if you want.
We're not really invited.
It's like an R S V P. No, you're, if you are interested in learning about energy code stuff, it's gonna be more like builders. You did?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll send it. Okay, awesome.
Think I'll put it on my calendar.
Okay, great.
It should tell you on the day before.
It's here. Are you gonna be on time?
Well, I've been doing this for three, it's the first time I've been late. Give me a break. I was on the north side of Monctons. On a trek.
Um, okay, back to this. One thing I added was just some G I S mapping goals, adding those maybe into the plan or just establishing those a little further. Looking at some examples would be helpful to see like what other communities are doing, but there's certainly more layers that we could add to help inform our decisions. Okay. Um, this is a page from the Climate Action Plan. I just included it in case anybody was wondering what it's all about. But these are just eight of the sectors that are high impact on climate action, so. Move along.
So is that energy thing better be videoed or 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 zoomed? I want to be on the Green River just.
Oh, um, I'm not sure, right. I'll look at the flyer. I have it in the hallway here. I can let you know before you leave today. Good. Um, I would hope they would at least record it for people to watch.
Three, four hours?
It's a full day. I don't really know how the format is gonna work with Zoom. Like I'm assuming it's a classroom style deal where everybody's kind of sitting and listening, so that would be very easy to record. Um, or do via Zoom, but maybe they have like interactive elements that are great for that. If you'd like, I can ask Kendra more details too, if it's not on the flyer.
I find all that stuff real attractive. I just couldn't order it to be on.
But you don't want to miss that. Um, there, I think they have quite a bit of outreach um planned, so there's nothing, only opportunity to connect about it. Um, all right, so community value number two is sense of community, community and inclusivity. This is where it's really a lot, there's a lot of focus on housing, uh, which obviously needs a lot of updates based on what we've already done and what we're hoping to do in the near term. Um, but I, yeah, I got some comments on this that are like very specific to housing. I think all of that's gonna be really wonderful to update after we have a housing needs assessment and housing action plan. But we might also be doing these things sort of at the same time. All right. And then so.
Have you been turned loose on the housing assessment yet?
Um, the Housing Needs Assessment, RFP went out, Request for Proposals went out. And we are taking proposals until Friday and then we'll be looking at all of those and picking a consultant next week. Um, we did apply for the grant funding with DOLA and I do have all that actually in an update. But we can jump ahead. It's only us guys.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I was like, wait, I'm gonna talk about this. No, you're good. You're good.
That's all right. You can simply.
It's great. Yeah, thanks for wondering, you know? Um, so I also added accessibility in here. That's definitely something that um, we've pointed out as being a goal, but looking at it in kind of a broader sense of the word. So like not just wheelchair accessible, but thinking about how people are aging in place here, how they can age in place in Ridgeway. If they can age in place in Ridgeway, um, families, how we're serving them. Uh, all sorts of different things, teens, kids, is there enough for them to do here? And then civic health, I kind of expanded on what I already touched on. If people feel like they can participate if they're heard by decision makers, um, do they feel represented? And are we doing a good job with public engagement? Obviously, we're seeking to meet all ages and abilities in our outreach. Um, there are new technology, things, software and constant contact type deals that can help with that. If that's something that we'd like to consider.
I think our outreach has gotten a lot better since we were hired on the team.
Oh, thank you.
And I also taped.
Only did one event.
You know, yeah, and it was a good event, by the way. Uh, but uh, but I think uh, doing things through the school.
Or collaboration with the school.
Collaboration with the school get gives, gives the town, you know, a much more direct uh, uh, channel to, you know, to get the kids talking to their parents about how what they're learning in school applies to life.
Yeah.
You know, where they're living.
Right.
Uh, whether that's the environment they're living in or a house or land use or whatever, I think. And and I think Susan Lacy would be open to.
Yeah, she's really, um, like a good person to collaborate with, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. We do have the youth advisory boards. They can also give some ideas on how to connect with their peers. Um, if we ever need to do that, and certainly we will during a, a master plan update process. So, um, all this stuff is really good to just know right now. Uh, and then public safety came up under this uh, this section. So again, fostering relationships with C dot, that came up a couple times tonight about crossings and things like that, the county. Um, and then also those two new plans from Uriah County, the emergency multi-jurisdictional emergency plan or whatever it's called. I can't remember. Too many plans. Uh, they're all mixing together. All right, community value number three is small town character and identity. I have kind of a lot on this one. Hopefully that's okay. Uh, we've got a lot of amazing events in town that showcase Ridgway's character and our identity. Um, Billy sent some over at concert series, Sherbno events and programming at the Sherb. Um, farmers markets, art fairs, the rodeo, ski tour. All these like big community events that like allow us to really show anyone who's visiting what we're all about. Um, do a really great job. But we also want to think about if our built environment is reflective of our small town. But we also wanna think about if our built environment is reflective of our small town character and identity. Part of that is, of course, keeping like the ag land on the outskirts ag and. Um, promoting infill that's con- consistent with what's already here. Um, in scale and in like pedestrian friendliness is another thing that comes into mind for like. Actual buildings, a lot of buildings are built to be car centric, like with a garage in front or. You know, something just not appealing to the everyday person walking in town. Um, so thinking through those things and whether we're actually meeting the mark on some of that is important. Um, and you guys can jump in at any point, please feel free. And then I kinda wanted to talk about historic preservation just at a high level. Um, so surveys of historic structures um and sort of defining. Goals and policies for historic preservation could be something that we. Could really focus.
Oh yeah, there was that map of historic homes, I've never even seen that, I had no idea that even existed.
Yeah, there's the little dots on the, in the plan.
Yeah.
Um, and those are the ones that are actually.
Say we're not doing a very good job of of letting go of that, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm on the planning commission and have been for years and had no idea that was a thing.
Yeah, we have a few um historically designated homes. Couple of commercial buildings, and then also the park is designated. So yeah, doing, and this also again ties into tourism and promotion and just. Our identity and getting people to feel like they are part of the community by knowing the history of the community is a huge thing. In historic preservation work, um that I think we could really benefit from.
It seems like that map could go to the Chamber of Commerce and like people could check those homes out just from the outside.
Yeah, it's like a placard that told more information about them or something, you know, a wayfinding deal.
I've printed a map that you could get.
There's like uh wayfinding and um walking tours of historic districts. In all sorts of different communities in Colorado, some of them you can do actually like virtually, you can put in headphones and walk to. To the buildings, like the town of Culverin has one, which is a very small town, so super easy to walk it. Um, it's like three seconds to the next mountain, they'll tell you something about that building. But um obviously we have the museums right here and they they seem very gung ho about um. Continuing educating the community and I think there's a lot of opportunity for co- collaboration and also just like. Reminding people what's so cool about this place and its history and. I don't know, I have a lot of enthusiasm for historic preservation when it's done, right?
Ridgeway lost so much of its history because of the reservoir.
It also lost a lot of its history uh during the depression. Where uh a lot of the lots, a lot of the downtown lots. Um, if you look at some of the old photos, um. There, they were, you know, two and three story uh commercial buildings. That were burnt because the owners couldn't afford to pay the taxes. Uh, if it was an empty building and it's not generating income, it was taxed as. You know, as if it would fall, so they burned it down and uh and that was. Kind of alarmingly common.
Yeah.
Here, and and across the west, actually. Of the races by grandmother moved to Denver. From Montrose.
Wow.
And from their home state, um, so.
To Western and the Russian?
Yes. Yeah, people just, you know, literally ta- taxes didn't go away, but but.
So they were able to um keep their prop, own the property still by burning the building?
Yeah, keep the dirt.
Yeah.
I I'd heard a different spin on that, I'd heard that the people lost the building. That the government attacked and the government.
As I, you know, as I heard it, it was.
For sure was accurate.
But uh, but it was probably a bit of both.
I think the hotel there, it was, it was a big fancy hotel, I don't remember there, but where Space to Create was. That was abandoned because it was gonna be flooded by the reservoir. And they applied for taxes and and the county took the ownership. And somehow was, I don't know if it was part of the work, but somehow the county demolished it.
See if there's any pictures of that building or something cool like that, that'd be so neat to know about.
It was called the Ike Hotel or the, it was a cool name, I remember, and it was.
Integrated into the Space to Create project, like, hey, this is what stood here before, is that cool?
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know, I like something like that, like turning into a little bit of a narrative, I'm sorry.
Turning?
Oh, ouch.
Yeah.
So I was just gonna skip to this map real quick, this is um. This is all the certified local governments in the state, and you can kinda see there's, there's municipal and counties. And you can see we're like sandwiched between all of these places that have been designated as a C L G. And what the certified local government status gets you is a lot of funding related to historic preservation. So it's something I've seen in like some of the planning files, maybe it was in this plan, um to look into. And I do intend to do that when I have time, um.
So Montrose and Tiarat have it, and then what's? Is that Uray, that's uh east of Tiarat?
Actually, it's Lake City.
Okay.
And then all of Gunnison County. Certified local government status, they get funding from like History Colorado and. Um, for for doing like survey work and preservation work, so someone would come and fill out the surveys that. It's, it's talking about the building when it was built, when it was modified, what are the materials, and they take pictures of them. And just document them for them, I mean, you could create like a local district if you wanted, you could do spot. Um, districting, like if there's a bunch of homes from a certain era that have a similar style, you can group them together. And you could create a local, um. Like way to. Not just document them, but designate them, um those would then have, I mean, a lot of the communities do that because. They don't want them to be remodeled in a way that would make them not look historic anymore, or like. They don't want them to get demolished, we don't have any of that.
It's true, um and uh. Started worrying with this, but it's that, that's actually how I uh, how I got on the board. Uh, the, the commission here is I, I uh. I suggested uh to have something similar to to that. Uh, uh, and a, a, a review board for for uh. For that, cuz I had just bought one of the original houses from eighteen ninety-three uh house. And uh, and Don Batchelder, who was the town manager at the time, asked me. Uh, he said, then, do you know of any other towns in Colorado that do that? I said, well, I'm sure, Tiarat does it, Aspen does. Uh, and he said, can you live in either of those towns? And Hark, which is, you know, the historical, historic architectural review committee. Uh, in in Tiarat, uh, has, you know, requirements that are. Absolutely honest, they're just. Uh, and uh, it's one thing to, you know, to. To recognize old buildings is another thing uh to uh. To require uh that, and and um. He, he actually said, you know, there's something to letting people. Do more or less what they would like to do with with the property. Uh, uh, but, but you know, that's, it's a, it's a knaki question, uh. My particular point was that there was a lot of similar double wides being moved in at the time. And uh, and he uh, and he said, well, I actually don't have all that much of a problem with it, he said. Frankly, I consider that asshole insurance. That somebody's not gonna build a ten thousand square foot, uh, you know, uh, homage to their evil ego.
Yeah.
You know, how the rancher can, you know, can pull a double wide onto the lot across the street from. Now, you know, distilling that down to, you know, to more realistic. Scenarios, um, is, is wise, but, uh, but nonetheless, I think. I would trend.
Yeah. We would seek to make it work for Ridgway.
Yeah.
Of course, um. But. I do think there needs to be something.
I, I like that idea of of uh, of just, you know, like. Uh, identifying.
Yeah, or celebrating what exists.
Celebrating, yeah, and and asking people if they want, uh, a, you know, to. Participate in a, in a recognition, you know, some sort of plaque or something.
Yeah.
I think that'd be great. Preventing them from making any, you know, change to it. Against my old school libertarian.
I mean, there's, there's definitely things that like the state historic. Uh, I can't even think of what it's called, Historic Preservation Shippo, whatever that stands for, um. That do feel a little bit impossible or incompatible with the other. Like goals with like sustainability and fire safety and all these things, I think they're hoping. And like working on upgrading some of that stuff to just be a little more thoughtful. Uh, but it's not gonna happen anytime soon, so I agree with you, um. We wouldn't wanna.
I think people, I think getting a survey though would be, would be the first step.
Alright, and then here I also have the well-connected neighborhoods portion of it, um. So, doing some mapping of the community-wide trail system. And again, talking, we're talking about safe crossings and pedestrian activities, there's this concept of Vision Zero, I don't need to get into it right now, but. Um, it's like a planning concept that's been really successful in Europe and is now making some that way over here, but. It's basically protecting people from traffic incidents by design, um. And then I got some comments about just the, the connected sidewalks and disconnected sidewalks and. How we can kind of better plan for making them more connected throughout town. Um, this also plays into expanding partnerships with the county again, River Bridge, the sheriff, um and C dot. And then we have some opportunities for corridor planning, which would also be very. Great, and we do have some stuff in our code that protects the corridors in some ways, but it's not, um. It's not super elaborate or, and maybe that's okay. Um, but I think it deserves another look as we consider updates. And then supporting creatives, so use the public art, art committee, um. Can be used to kinda update this section, we can connect with the Sherbno and Alpenlow. And make sure that all stakeholders are included in helping to inform the section of the, of the plan for a future update. And helping them build capacity, cuz that ties into our economic development conversation too.
Back to the corridor plan.
Sure.
There's gonna be a committee on that I'd like to serve on.
I mean, I think we, if we, when we do an update to this plan. Um, it'd be interesting to talk about it at that point, but we can talk about it now cuz it is like code stuff too. I mean, we can talk about it ahead of doing a plan update.
Uh, well, I'm in favor of it, you know, I think it should be, uh. I think what the town of Ridgway has done between the Conoco and in the, um. Business building there, the uh Chamber of Commerce building is fabulous, and I think that we. Either at the planning commission or just through the town should make some type of setback. Or corridor that would allow that to happen on all of our entranceways. And I think we could do that. By a setback, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking about, but I think by coming from Uray to Ridgway. Um, the right-hand side of the road could use some help as you get into it. And um, I bet you the setbacks are already there, and um.
Yeah, we don't have control over the right of way, there was a town right of way, so that's, we wouldn't, the setback wouldn't really. It'd still be on that person's property, so it wouldn't be.
And I think we should have some, maybe some landscape requirements on that placement, or that setback. If you front on our corridor.
That would be, you know.
Maybe a split rail fence like we did, I have all split rail fences coming in, it's inexpensive, it looks good with some trees behind it. It's not a, not a big cost item, and tie it all together, I, I don't, I like, I like what is done. At the park, at the, um, um, by the Chamber of Commerce. And none of that's real expensive, there's some irrigation there, there's a split rail fence and a couple of trees. If we did that in all of the entrances or or required the. Adjacent property owner to do that, or split it with them or something proactive.
Um, I think it's, be careful with citing the visitor center, cuz I know they put sod in when they first did that, and there was a little outrage about that. So just be, next that what you're talking about is the trees and the fence, not necessarily, not necessarily the turf.
Yeah, just, I like trees and fence, I don't, I don't need turf. But just, uh, we could just go up with a real inexpensive plan, and I just think it would look cool if they all kind of were similar.
Yeah.
And it not, doesn't have to be expensive.
Okay, cool. I like it. Anything else on community value number three? Um, okay, back to vibrant and balanced economy. So I got some comments about policies to increase occupancy in commercial buildings. Um. Does town wanna think about addressing something like that with regulation, uh, there's. Vacancy tax options that people need to like vote on.
There's some stuff going on there that we haven't talked about, and it's gonna be a government subsidized commercial building. Compete with the free market commission, free market is struggling. And uh, Uray uh, Housing is talking about doing a commercial building across from the coffee shop there. This commercial condos for sale or for rent on the first floor. And here's, there's significant blowback on the commercial. Commercial real estate industry about that, so it, it seems. It seems clumsy if we're gonna try to help commercial, free market commercial. And then subsidize commercial.
Compete with them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who don't pay tax, you know, it's a, they don't pay real estate tax, they're, they're nonprofit, they get government funding, low interest rates, there's no way they can compete. And that's uh, that a gossip point in the real estate community for a while now, and it hasn't come up yet, but. There's some pushback on all that, so I need to say it.
Okay, that's helpful. We already kinda talked about economic development, if anybody has anything else they wanna talk about related to that we can. Um, I didn't really, let's see. Um I didn't really, let's see. Yeah, uh. Some of it had to do with. Hope, like if we're being aspirational in the plan, moving beyond business retention and. Perhaps moving toward business attraction. Um obviously, we need to work on both, but. Instead of just. Helping retain businesses in some way, helping to attract new industries perhaps. And then we have our. New land use tool, the study for economies in place, and that can be used um. To kind of update this section a little bit and the growth framework section that we'll get into. And then sustainable tourism is also something that came up under here. Um. Again, we sort of chatted about that. If anybody has any thoughts. Let me know before I move on.
What is sustainable?
I think I received a couple of comments on that, like, how does that work, um? Yeah, it's a good question, I think, again, I think a lot of it does come down to like. Education and then also the folks that live here. Making them proud to live here and working on like. I don't know, I'm thinking of like lead no trace stuff and like no trace principles, of course. And like if I saw someone drop something on the ground, I would one hundred percent walk up to them, I don't even care if I'm in my community, I'd be like. Why'd you do that, you know? Pick it up, um but you wouldn't do that, Michelle?
No, I'd probably just pick.
I just pick it up. I'm not picking pressure off.
Oh, you wouldn't say, you wouldn't ask like, wouldn't you be curious? Wouldn't you be curious?
Step it up.
Take a swing at him?
Step it up.
It seems like curious, it seems pretty obvious what their problem is.
They took pressure all day.
Alright, well anyways, this part I'm also talking about, like just setting some parameters around what we're hoping to gain out of more visitation. And connecting the dots with like bringing money to our local businesses. Through attracting recreational stuff, I don't know.
That seems logical that we create tourist opportunities to sustain the tourism. And attract tourism that we want.
Yeah.
Not a, not a NASCAR racetrack.
Right, right.
You know, so I think that's a form of sustainable, I mean.
Sure, yeah.
You know, I think we do that. It really been done in Ray with the Viparada or whatever the thing's called, we're not doing so much, we did it with the bike trail.
Well, I was just gonna say.
Bike trail is huge.
The rat, the rat trails bring people here.
Yeah.
And uh, yeah.
Maybe we need to accentuate that and market that sound.
Yeah.
That's a good idea, Bill.
So putting together some goals around that and just figuring out how those things can.
Yeah.
Figure out what we're looking for out of those folks coming and using the rat trails. Is it so they can be on the rat trails? No, it's probably so they can come spend some money in town, so.
You know.
But I mean, is there, is there's, I think when. I think those, I mean, if we could, is there something that we could dovetail into the rat trail that those people who use the red trail will want?
Mm-hmm.
You know, and so there's probably some accessory or auxiliary uses that we can figure out that would complement.
Yeah. It's surprising how many people know about the rat trails, you know, when I just miss it other towns.
Yeah.
Uh and and I'm liking.
Yes.
So I mean, it's a thing.
It's definitely a thing.
Small brewery at the bottom of the parking lot.
Well, alright.
Okay.
Chucks. Community value number five is well-managed growth. So we've talked a little bit about infrastructure, but I don't know that we really got into service capacity, so like. Providing quality services to residents, uh not just water and sewer, but emergency response, trash pickup, things like that, um.
There was a lot of concern about the water when that water study came out and basically said we're we're good till whenever. Um that was just done recently, a lot of people were like, um, I'm not just sold on that. Um another thing that we pointed out at that time was that they hadn't considered. The whole dust on snow concept, how it melts the snow more quickly, because they claimed there wasn't enough data on it yet, which of course there is, but it wasn't considered. In that report, and I've heard from a lot of local people that. Um. Were still concerned, they're like, yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sold that we're good, just because that report said we're good, because it's. Things are changing so rapidly, you know, how good are we for how long? Um so there was a lot of concern about that.
Yeah, uh. We do just get our water from two sources, the source that comes into Lake, Lake O. And the Beaver Creek. Thing, and you know, when half of well, and Beaver Creek, actually, I think, uh. Uh is is the larger of the two. Like, like oh, is a great. Uh like backstop, but it's not something we use, as as far as I understand it, not. Not claiming that I do, uh, uh, understand it fully. But, you know, when, when. The Beaver Creek uh headgate blew out, it was really. Had a serious effect on. Uh. Both short-term and potentially long-term.
Yeah.
You probably don't want that.
I think the community would appreciate more information. About that.
Mm-hmm.
Um and that the water study, people were kind of like, hmm. Better than it's, you know, the results were better than not, but they weren't totally.
And and just. Water, or do we want to talk about? Other services, I mean.
I think water is a big one, I don't think it's the only one, um there was also to talk, I know there's like Tri River. Has water available outside of town, Tri County, you know, and then.
Everything.
Also that there's a gray water that goes to the park for irrigation, but it's not available anywhere else. In town, like is that something that would ever? I think the infrastructure on that would be huge to have other water lines, but. I think that, you know, our water usage goes up considerably in the summer, because people are irrigating with treated water, which is unnecessary. I don't know what the solution to that is, but it seems like. Something that could at least be looked at for the future, we might not solve it, you know, in my lifetime, but it's something to be aware of and consider. And as it gets drier and drier here.
A water awareness, uh. Thing.
Mm-hmm.
Uh might, might not be a bad.
Yeah.
Thing, I mean. Get somebody in, you know, uh.
You can pull in some landscaping professionals that could talk about, you know, the plants, regional plants that are good for pollinators, that can handle very little water, you know, that kind of thing. And the town can be, have more awareness around planting those types of things too.
Mm-hmm.
Right, like we have these. Uh flower containers on these corners on Clinton Street and. You know, they have irrigation to them and. It's all great, I know it was part of the streetscape plan, but it's. And the trees in the sidewalk, it's like we live in Colorado. It. I don't know, I don't, I don't see how that ties into our sustainability, like we're all sustainable, we do the zero escape example over there. Um and then, you know, we've got these like flower planters that we're running irrigation to, there's a little bit of. Petradictory stuff going on.
Compete to distance.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Alright.
And I think. We talking about. The environment and saving water, and we don't talk about our leaky water system, leaky supply system. And our ditch is inadequate, our pond is leaking, we don't ever talk about fixing that stuff. All we talk about is cutting down the consumption, and it's embarrassing that we have such a. Flawed collection system, in my opinion, and we focus on watering.
Yeah, yeah. Society is.
There's just a bunch of money out there for infrastructures right now, I don't know why we're not wiping the ditch, why we're not lining the pond and all that stuff.
Right.
I think water could be its own section.
Yeah, I think it needs to be.
Yeah.
I think I'd agree.
Cause I'm, yeah.
Um. Okay, related to just managing growth. Parking, traffic, transit, all those things are tied together, obviously, produce some parking requirements and we can update that this section based on that. Uh but there's also some new transit options and opportunities, um. Traffic, I don't know, maybe. Does anybody have any thoughts about just these three pieces, I guess?
I think we spoke about some of the big ones and it all, it depends on CDOT, right?
Yeah.
Well, I think that, I mean, this is again. We have one way in and out of Ridgway, and I think we should have a second alternative access, I'm getting onto Sherman Street. And during high traffic is becoming very difficult.
So another bridge?
Well, we have another bridge, the Weaver Bridge, and it doesn't connect.
Doesn't connect.
On purpose, on purpose, by the way. And um. So, I mean, there's other bridges, and this guy wrote, what is it, the Dallas Bridge, Weaver Bridge, it's great, there'd be other bridges, and it's just a thought.
Mm-hmm.
So and we were, this was all discussed during the River Sage subdivision twenty-something years ago. And uh. I was an advocate to can, to have that as an outlet and. Eagle Hill, which was not in the town, turned us down.
And nobody wants, nobody wants to handle uh traffic.
I think it's a, it's health safety.
Yeah.
So I think that, to me, that's a big issue under traffic.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Uh on one, on one positive note, that, that uh. Uh. The van service, our way.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, which serve goes back and forth between Ridgway and Uray and Montrose.
Mm-hmm.
And it runs, I think, an hour or, you know, two hours, something like that.
Like that.
It actually, uh. Is a great thing for, you know, for uh our. Uh people even older than me.
So I can go break it in your end and roll.
Yeah.
Are people using it?
They, yeah, actually, my wife used it to, since she hates to drive.
There's now three.
For a medical appointment.
Three transit options, us staying our way and Smart now has a route from here to Tahrir.
So I would say getting the word out more on that would be good.
Yeah, I, I think especially for.
Where do you find out about it?
You know, because you're, you're.
It's on our website. I'll say, but.
Reminded me of. Your point on the market. Uh you know, that people are trapped, you know, uh to shop here. That is true, but now even if you, you know, if you're aging and you can't drive for some reason. Uh, uh you can take this into, you know, take you, drop your rabbit to city market. Wherever you want to shop, and then an hour later, you can take it back.
And they'll pick you up at like those specific places?
Designated shops, yeah, yeah, designated shops.
This is uh pretty awful, see, I didn't even know about this ways thing, but is there a way that the planning commission or could do a. Monthly or quarterly news blip and send out either an email or a hard copy, this is what we're working on, we're working on the transportation this month, and we're working on this and this and this, and we're talking about the water.
Services that are available, that sort of thing.
What we've accomplished and what we're trying to accomplish and.
We have a town manager's report that goes out month. About monthly and Preston presents it at town council, and that has a lot of good. Updates and information about what the town's working on and just other things in the community, and he does a call for items. Uh ahead of publishing those and posting them on our website, um. Do you guys get a call for items potentially? Is there, no, maybe there's your.
I didn't even know that Preston did that, tell me.
Yeah. That's our town managers, managers report, they're all on the website, so you can actually go kind of back in time and get some of the stuff that's been going on. It was very helpful for me as a new employee.
Yeah.
To know what, what all Ridgway's been working on, um. So. I guess the answer is that's kind of being ha- being done, but if you have a different idea.
I was just thinking about for the planning commission have its own thing, but I, I think probably the, I, I don't know, but I think Preston's is probably gonna be more technical and bunny and all that stuff, we could do something much more general about. Ways to travel to Ray and more. Down home, more practical stuff than probably Preston, you know, so.
Okay. Yeah, this all ties into like civic health and the goals that we can set in the master plan, so.
Connect to.
Yeah, so these are things we can talk about, or they can become um items in the master plan, goals.
Then we can solicit input through that, I mean, that might be too idealistic.
We'll have to, um.
This is aspirational, so I don't think it can be too idealistic, Jack.
Okay.
Uh the final thing here I put in was um the development community, it's not community development, um connecting with the development community. So promoting public-private partnerships and having a clear process, a lot of transparency, um.
Did you feel like any development people showed up at the community conversation?
Yeah. Yeah, quite a lot.
Good.
Yeah. I thought so. I mean, there could always be more people. Coming to those sorts of makes.
Have a lot of developers here in town, but, you know, I'm, I'm, just to be on the record here, I don't understand why the town hasn't. And maybe this is the planning commission's job, is to take a piece of property that we own, say, over there by the Soul Ranch Soccer Fields, is a two-acre piece, and put a RFP out. For a developer to make us a proposal, to Bill Smouse, see what we get. And I just put the bait in the water. And we've talked about that years ago, but I don't understand why we don't just try stuff like that.
You know, that's a very good point, there, there's a, um, you would say. An article in today's New York Times, uh about uh building housing on federal land, uh, which is what. Uh the thrust of the article was about, but, but municipal, on municipal land, uh if, if we are. Doing, if we are short of. Uh. Uh employee affordable housing. Uh. Um. You know, maybe we'd lease them.
Probably would partner with them, we would have them make us a proposal, we own some real nice land.
Yeah, so I think part of it is that we need this housing needs assessment done.
Yeah.
And I think there's gonna be a lot of conversation about that when we go through the housing action plan. Um because really, as a. A newbie here, um, having worked on housing plans and strategic housing plans in the past. There is a lot that the town could consider doing, but the town needs to decide if they want to be a developer, and I don't think they do. But.
But, and that's what.
I'm suggesting I should be.
The thrust of this article was.
One step up.
Was to lease the land.
Sure.
Not to sell it.
Right.
Uh and not to administer it, but.
Yes, yes.
Uh.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great option.
Results in, in affordable. Housing.
Yeah, it's a great option, it's, it's great that we have land that could possibly be suited for, for that, but. Yeah, I don't know, it's gonna, I think it's gonna, we're gonna get some clarity around that as we go through this.
Even that, that piece that Susan Lacy was interested in doing. For, for, strictly for, uh, for school personnel, but, you know. Nonetheless, things like that, that actually either the. School district or the town, which they own, you know, it could somehow benefit the town.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And result in.
I just, I mean, I think that's just for information reason, I think the. Telluride, Telski, Tahrir's here, just gave. The Tahriride School District. Tahriride, Telski, Tahriride's here, it just gave the Tahriride School District twenty one vacant homes. Down, is they, you know.
Where?
In, in Austin, down, what's it, on the downside.
Down in uh, Two Rivers.
I don't, I was told that, but I don't, I didn't see that, but I was told by, pretty reliable sources.
I think, uh, yeah, I just grimaced a little because I think that they were having trouble developing them. I don't think, I don't think the community was opposed to uh, the density that they were proposing. Existing community, and so they just offloaded them.
Exactly. That's exactly what I heard.
I was just guessing on that, but yeah.
Well, that might get more community support if their housing teachers and.
I've been down there for a while.
Well, I was told by somebody who knew that they just didn't wanna put up with the requirements that they're gonna have to put up with, so I don't know, I assume they sold them to the school. I don't know that they're paying them in school. But Bill and Kelski have assumed they sold them, but that's a transaction. You know, I just, I think there's a lot of opportunity for the town to get housing without being ninety nine year lease or just will, will contribute the land for free, but send us a check every month as a twenty five percent ownership or you know, I can come up with four or five different scenarios.
I agree with you. I think there are a lot of opportunities, but we need to define.
Yeah.
Right.
Who we're serving, what we need, all that stuff. Um, but I'm excited for more housing discussion later, yeah. Alright, so growth framework is the final section I had y'all look at. And a lot of it's the future land use map, but I just wanted to show this map really quickly. Cause it shows the town boundary there in red, the urban growth boundary is that teal color and the initial growth boundary is gold. Yeah, feel free. Um, so a, a theme that came out of just your review and my reviews, a proactive approach to growth. Seems like everybody is expecting growth. Um, so how do we be proactive about letting growth pay for its own impacts? Are we capturing all the impacts of growth? And um, are we getting the right mix of growth, when, you know, all these things come into play here?
So the teal is the urban growth boundary?
Yeah.
The red is the current under?
Yeah, I see, I see the goal, oh, I see the gold a little bit. It's kind of hard to see.
It's over the, on the top of some other stuff, isn't it, some places? The gold is the initial growth boundary, so when we're talking about growing out from the core, we're in fills within the town boundary, well, within the town core, and then town boundaries where we would like realistically expand to next. Um, but some of those areas are inconsistent with initial growth boundary, so I guess initial growth boundary are the, are the areas we would expand to next or reasonably expand to next.
I think so.
It's a little fuzzy. Oh, that's C dot?
Yeah. That's C dot, that's still a school.
Yeah.
And that's.
Yeah.
And this is, this is the new school.
I didn't realize that's all.
Yeah, in the current fashion.
There's more here than I know.
So this section kind of talked about how things will grow. Um, but obviously, we're all kind of guessing here. That's okay. Uh, and then maintenance of open space in town owned property, including the right way came up during the uh, feedback period, so considering also like what it takes to maintain everything that the town is responsible for, um, and setting some standards about like landscape maintenance, trash and litter cleanup and just like general maintenance things, that all ties into our capacity to grow and continue growing without kind of thinking about just this, how the town looks. Um, alright, and then I have the future land use map up here and we can dig into it or we can save it for some other time, but I basically wanted to just talk about, again, the same boundaries are on this map. And me and TJ talked about it quite a bit too. We both thought it was interesting that we did a future land use map for the entire urban growth boundary and then also that the urban growth boundary includes anything in this area. At all, cause again, it's creating the same issue you have in River Sage. There's no connection except here.
That's County Road twelve.
That's County Road twelve, yeah. So, I don't know, I was curious if anybody knew why that piece was included or.
John would know.
Yeah, well, maybe we can talk about it another time, but it would be helpful or like maybe would making this like a little more narrowed and focused on what seems realistic would probably be a good step for an update.
So is that a new map? Can I, can I get that printed, one of those last two minutes?
You have.
Yeah, this is.
But it's on two pages.
Yeah.
Yeah, which I found myself toggling back and forth uh, uh, to see what the color codes.
I can send this, I can send this along, yeah, and you all will get this whole PowerPoint presentation.
Oh, good.
Well, I'm pretty important on the wall, cause I, but also the other one, that one's kind of fuzzy, the urban growth boundary, one is more this.
Well, you could get it printed larger over at the office.
I don't, yeah, it might be, I could get it smaller, might be more.
Yeah, this one's just like a screenshot from RGIS and then this one here was created with the actual master plan. So you can zoom in and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to get that, get it printed sometime.
Okay, what size would that print to, like eleven seventeen?
We have, we have.
Eleven seventeen would be perfect for me.
Yeah, can you print some for us?
In color? Of course, in color.
Right, exactly. No good, I, yeah.
So the, the blue there, it's hard, the codes on, the blue is uh.
Institutional.
Institutional, so it's a school and the county, county property.
Yeah.
And the.
The fairground.
Tree.
Little schools.
All the good.
What's the green?
The green is parks and natural areas. So some of it's open space that was defined by these different uh, subdivision projects, so HOA maintained. It's not necessarily town open space, well, it's not town parks, but it's open space in some of these areas.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Um, and then, you know, the town core is kind of defined here.
Did you grade them?
No, this was part of the master plan process.
She's been visiting.
Uh, TJ updated it and added doling for us, which was nice. Now it's perfectly accurate. But again, this is like future land use, so it doesn't necessarily reflect what's already there in some areas. Uh, I mean, we can talk about the lot three PUD for just like one second here, uh, it's zone general commercial, but we have a mixed use business future land use aspiration for that piece. So we have two commercial things um, that say this lot should be commercial. So that was obviously an issue when they came here.
Right.
And tried to present residential, so we need to kind of look at this a little deeper and think would that apply to all the places that are zoned, general commercial, but then have this mixed use business uh, future land use aspiration, like Wydell, for example, there's a single family home at the end of Wydell.
Um, who are opposed to most development over there?
Well, I don't know. It's actually general commercial.
Well, then the other side of the street's, sure, I think, on that side of the street.
Maybe you're right, maybe you're right, um. Anyway, on the other side of the street where it is general commercial, do we want them to have neighbors? Or do we want them to have businesses there? Are people driving down Wydell and going to go to the end where there's a single, you know, it's like, some things aren't maybe consistent with how people actually want to see the town grow, yeah, so thinking about it.
Well, we talked about that when that proposal came in up near, for Four Winds up beyond Vista Terrace. And um, that it's, I think it's, I don't know if it's on this map, but it was like future development. Um, and yeah, we talked about and, and the same with, uh, I think three A, like if there's things we absolutely don't want there, then maybe we should look at the zoning and change it so that we're not getting applications that are like, but wait, this is what it's zoned for. If we're not gonna allow that, right?
I've been, I've been arguing for this for years. I think we shouldn't mislead people with the wrong zoning. I'm sorry?
I'll turn it over to you, cause you were the one that spoke about.
No, I've been doing it for years, man, I, I'm, I think we need to decide where we want, single family, decide where we want commercial and zone that appropriate.
So with a master plan update, we are gonna look at the future land use map, this map. And hopefully sort some of that out at this level. For changing the zoning that exists there, that's a whole different sort of can of worms and we can work toward it, but it's actually going to be really helpful to have this aspirational document that can lead the zoning changes because.
Right.
You can't do like spot zoning, that's very illegal, you know, you can't just like pick and choose lots that would, so. Yeah, this, I think it's cool that we're working on this first before we tackle anything like that. But if there are like inconsistencies that you know, related to this or the zoning, it's always good to just write those down.
Well, and the big issue with the visit, the, the development beyond Vista Terrace was there's only one way in and one way out, and we're like, it's not feasible to do another development there unless there is other access. Both ways, you know, and it was presented that there was this old rundown road, single lane road that could be used, but it wasn't allowed to be improved and it really wasn't gonna suffice, and we're like, if that's where it stands, then that shouldn't be.
Yeah, absolutely.
Rent room.
Future development makes perfect sense.
Yeah, I think we, we, and again, I'm not throwing stones at you, I think we create a lot of our own headaches that way, or we have in the past.
Well, certainly that development was, you know, it was allowed, uh, you know, the development was, was done in what eighty or, you know, seventies, late seventies or early eighties. And, you know, they just. There, there was no thought.
And all the people were here with like shovels and pitchforks, so for that proposal.
Tomatoes.
Rotten tomatoes.
And rightly so, that actually.
Yeah, well, I think it would be actually helpful for everyone to have a printed version of this where we can actually like make notes, put sticky notes.
I'll study it, yeah, I, I, I think this is fabulous, and I, I currently don't.
This isn't something I put together, but it is fabulous.
It's such a, such a wonderful tool.
Such brilliant colors.
Okay, and then I was breaking.
We need a big one on the wall.
Yeah.
That would be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, you know.
It's like that side.
Four by five or so, yeah, exactly, on this wall.
Well. That's wall art. Just do a mural.
Yeah.
Right here. So this is showing the breakdown of all the sections and like what they each mean. I don't know if you need, need to go into this, if you're gonna study it on your own, then I won't go into this.
Went through it.
I've read it all.
Great, okay.
And I think it's all good.
Yeah.
Cool.
It's clear, you know, it's consistent.
Great, well, I do have an assignment for you for next time. There's an action plan that kind of brings all this stuff together, tells us how we can accomplish these goals. Um, that we've talked through and obviously if we think modifications, the action plan will need to be modified. Um.
Twenty four page, twenty four.
And where do we find the community event summary?
Community event summary is also there on the same um, page, um, town of Ridgeway, it's under appendix sections. And I will send you this after, but I can also include it in the email, the link, but it's all on the same page, so it's just gonna link to the town page, you gotta scroll to find it.
And, and then if I mention at the next meeting that people need to let us know if they're not gonna be here, um, who should they let you know? Maybe it doesn't have to go to Preston anymore.
Planning Commission bylaws, it does tell you that you need to let the planner know as soon as you know that you're not gonna be.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
No, you, that was, but no, that's not what I'm talking about.
We talked about it at the last meeting.
Yeah.
And I don't remember who said they weren't gonna be here, and I do know that it was gonna be multiple people, but I just.
So I won't like publicly shame anyone, but just make the point that, and I don't think, I don't, it's up to you if it's okay to just say it at the meeting or if you'd prefer that they email you.
I would prefer that they email.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we know, when we show up here, like that.
People are talking at the same time here and I don't know what all.
Okay, so I'll make that point.
Okay.
At the next meeting, without publicly shaming anyone.
And then I just have a little update, if anybody wants to look at some of, oops, I didn't know there were so many.
Whoa.
Uh, I have some housing updates, which we sort of talked through already. But uh, this is our timeline for twenty twenty five, I put some stars next to things that we've made some progress on. So the seven seven section and the guidelines adoption, I'm planning to bring that to you all for consideration at the next meeting. It went through the, the referral process that we kind of made up, I tried to send it to like realtors and developers and builders who know developers and architects, I sent it to a lot of people directly, I also sent it to like city, county, um, home trust.
When's the next meeting, on the fourteenth of May?
I don't, I think it's like the twenty first.
Yeah, the fourteenth would be the second, that's council.
Okay, good, I'm here.
Um, so I'm just letting you know, that process kind of ended, I mean, if I make more comments, I'll try to integrate them if need be. Um, but I didn't wanna make you read it all again because I wasn't gonna meet the noticing requirements for this meeting. And then we did some public outreach, obviously, at the community conversation event, I put two stars here cause one was the referral of those materials, and then the other was the event.
Oh.
The competitive bid process is underway for the housing needs assessment, um, I've also applied for that grant that Dola is putting out there, so hopefully we get it. Um. And yeah, we're moving right on. So I was gonna show you some pictures and stuff from the community conversation if you wanna know. I thought this picture was a good sign of success, cause there's this spilled juice box. A messy kids table is always a sign of good party. Um, so we had thirty nine individual sign-ins, but we had attendance from representatives of Chappa, Department of Local Affairs, Division of Housing, Home Trust, Tahriride Foundation, Rural Homes, Habitat for Humanity, Sammons, I don't know that any of those people signed in necessarily. Um, and then obviously kids.
There were a lot of people.
Didn't sign in. There was a couple of times it felt like a little busy, which was good.
I don't know why. You know, the whole URA, uh, the home, the home trust of URA was, you know, stuff they were doing, uh, in URA was really interesting.
Yeah, yeah, all the regional stuff we don't really talk about here is.
Yeah.
Well to learn about.
So.
Yeah, good, I'm glad.
Really, really worthwhile.
I'm glad you thought so.
Are there more pictures?
Yeah.
Um, there's no less, there's.
There's our mayor.
There's some art in the background, I noticed too.
Oh, yeah, one of those pieces doesn't exist anymore.
What?
What is it?
The apple hit the floor at the, at last first Friday. Yeah.
Oh, no, that's wrong. Um, well, here's more. And.
That was quick.
Well, sorry.
There's Bill again.
I did share the survey results from the little scanned QR codes in your packet. Uh, there wasn't really anything surprising in there, but I didn't talk to the person or potentially people that like were really against space to create building and just like apartment style buildings in general and like anything beyond like rural, small town development. But I did wanna just point out that all of the people that took the survey, when it asked about like what kinds of development they're supportive of, all twelve, there's twelve, twelve, twelve. Um, supported both attached and detached ADUs. So even if the person's very vocal about not liking the apartment style buildings, this like. So even if the person's very vocal about not liking the apartment style buildings, this like. Gentle density concept is kind of getting through to people and they like something that's like compatible. And feels like infill and creates density without blocking views or anything like that.
Space to create was a little controversial.
I'd like to talk about that. Is it, is it because of where it's located or is it size and shade?
I think it feels like an urban development to this particular person that gave us a lot of responses about it.
Person gave one responses about it?
It may have been two people, but I, it was, I didn't like go through and look at. But one person was particularly vocal in the scan, like survey questionnaire. Um, I didn't talk to that person at the event, so I actually don't know who it was. I, everyone I talked to was pretty positive about, like, was feeling like it was a positive thing that we had.
I, I don't like the architecture, but it accomplishes what we need. I mean, it's only thirty units there. I mean, I think we could have. It looked a little bit better, but it, it's kind of, I think we're gonna see more.
I think that that was a big part of what this person's issue was, was. The appearance, yeah.
It could have been, and again, I'm not throwing stones, it could have been softer. It still accomplished pretty much what it has accomplished.
Politically, there were issues, um, you know. There were, it ended up that a bunch of like teachers couldn't qualify because it was so low, like people ended up moving here so that they could live here and. It's tricky because the, the, the income is so low, like if you want to live there, then you're barred from getting additional. What, like, it's, the whole thing is tricky. And I've heard since they've been having a lot of management issues. They haven't. Have been able to keep a manager.
So I have watched.
The decor room is wonderful. I loved hosting the space or the conversation there. I thought it was so cool to have. The A V capabilities and have you done.
Did you like it better than this room because of the location?
Yes, a hundred percent, yes.
Cause it's the center of town.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a great place for.
Uh, you know, a kind of debrief on this basically and see, and, and not in a public meeting with, with this. This board and see what we like and what we don't like, because I personally think we're gonna see more of that type of. Building of a large box that looks better and there's places in town in, in. Jamming thirty units on five lots is what we need. So I think we should digest it, understand it, critique it and decide what we like and don't like and talk about it. I'm not, I'm not sure how, what that venue looks like, but I mean.
Maybe it's some type of community conversation and you actually ask people for input.
Well, I think, I think the board should, should talk about it and then, then reach out and. And we can voice our opinions on what we like about it and see what they don't like about it, but they, she says she's already kind of done that. Was it just by default?
Uh, just by default.
I think it should be all the, all the both.
I wasn't, I wasn't around during.
I think this is a great idea to have that conversation before and not trying to have it when someone's proposing to build something like that.
I keep saying, I think we need to decide what we want and help create it. But through zoning, through, through our thoughts and kind of manifest it from this board. And we haven't done that.
Well, looking at the future land use map and seeing if that stuff is consistent with what we're hoping for those different areas of town will be a big first step.
Housing needs assessment, right?
Will tell us what we actually need.
Heading in that direction.
Bill, what were you gonna say?
I was gonna say, uh, you know, that, uh. You're really suggesting like a, a kind of retreat type of.
Yes, situation. I would love it.
Yeah, where, you know, where we're not being recorded, we're just, you know. Our ideas on, on directions that the town could go, which might be for that.
I've actually asked if we could do it at my house and invited people and I was told we couldn't do that. So it just seems awkward that we can't sit down and talk about what we wanna. See happening. And I don't, I don't know the venue or the laws, but not hosted at my house. And uh, I'd like to specifically talk about the space to create. The property right across the street has just come on the market and we're gonna see that same plane again.
Well, let me look into that as a possibility.
Well, maybe, I don't understand. I think all we have to do is notice it, but Preston, Preston said that we couldn't do it, so we didn't do it. But I, I wanted to sit down with my peers on this board and talk about, I think it was ADUs at the time and density of ADUs and. I just like to do it while I vote.
Let's see, see what's possible.
Yeah, perhaps, was it, I mean, if it was like in anticipation of the ADU update of the code. And that was an item that you had to make a recommendation on, then it would be like. Then that's.
Maybe that's why he said.
That I think it was that something like that would have to be done officially and noticed, you know, open meeting laws, you're, we read about it all the time. People are, or could be here, you know, but where government, local governments are getting in trouble for not doing that. So let's not, let's avoid that, like, let's. Kudos to Preston for avoiding that.
Talked about being transparent and getting other people involved and it's hard to do that when. It's not here at Town Hall and neutral space. Yeah, okay, um. Do, should I touch on this? I, I shared this, I thought it was interesting. Someone sent it after the community conversation. So it's a screenshot from the URA plane dealer. It's from September nineteen ninety three. And it focuses on housing affordability. The headline says affordable housing too costly for builders. And I can't really make out much of the text, but there's a section explaining. That many believe it's just the beginning of the problem, these types of problems. And then they introduce a series called No Place to Call Home, which explains that for many. URA County employees, finding a place to live is tough, if not impossible. So all that to say, these are not new problems, they're not gonna go away quickly. Um, we need to be very thoughtful.
That was an issue in Tire Red when I moved there in the eighties.
I added the boards just in case anybody was curious about what.
But the other side of that is, you know, Tire Red has built a ton of affordable housing. But as the town has grown, there's more businesses and there's more people who come there and wanna live there. And so. Will, will you ever have built and will you ever have built enough? You know, you'll know that when there's a bunch that are sitting empty, that you've built enough.
Exactly. I mean, you just gotta do the best you can, I think. I think Tire, Tire Red's done a pretty good job.
Well, that's all I have for you guys tonight.
There we are.
I was impressed with the fact that you went that as far as you could. Uh, to, to, to build up to this.
I just needed to dig into it a little.
Is that an interesting enough conversation that we've had?
Yeah, it was helpful. I just, I guess, I don't wanna lose the fact that we are doing a master plan update next year. And that like, it's so great to talk about all this stuff right now, but I don't want it to be like. The enthusiasm will get lost in between or something. I'm gonna keep, we're gonna keep the momentum and enthusiasm for all these great ideas. Um, but not everything can happen at once, as we all know.
Let's do it.
Let's do it. I brought in the feedback boards from the event. If anybody's interested in seeing like what people put on sticky notes. Or where they voted with their stickers on like what they were interested in. You can see that like the infill high density is not something people are against in any way, shape or form. They just don't want monstrous buildings, is what it seems like, so.
And space to create, we're all in monster build.
Well, some people thought it was.
But did we get any positive feedback on space to create?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We get positive feedback on it all the time. I didn't even ask in the survey, like, what do you think about space to create? It was just this one particular person who was like. This building's ugly.
Is look at the backside, how it's cut away so much, right? So some of that maybe could have been incorporated into the front. Right? They did their parking and stuff, but there's probably a way that the front didn't have to be so. There could have been maybe some, um. Uh, like a deck area that's like covered that, you know, there's a space that cuts in instead of just that, those fronts. Because there's so much on the back that's like that, it might have been able to. Um, it's probably less expensive to build it the way that they did, right? So there, there's all these trade offs. You know, you want it more visually interesting. Well, that's gonna cost more.
Yeah, I have a lot to say, but I'm not saying it.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you. Uh, let's end this informal meeting. Thanks, everybody.
We formally end the informal meeting?